My apologies, as soon as we have a board quorum of the board, we'll get started. I apologize for the late start. Thank you. We have a quorum of the board, so I'd like to get started. Can I have a motion to reopen from closed session for the charter application work session? Motion by Commissioner Chinia. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Kashani, Chinia, Berkeley approve. Five in favor, four absent. People will join us as they come, so we're going to get started. I'd like to start by welcoming everybody to this session. And thank you to the people who have put so much time and effort into the application process. We know how big of a task this is to work on pulling your ideas and concepts and partners together in to bring your ideas forward for the in support of city schools, children. And just to reiterate, and this should be obvious, given the nature of our portfolio, that this is a district that very much values charter schools. And we continue to believe they're a very important part of our overall portfolio and the options that we provide for kids. So with that said, we're going to have a brief introduction from Ms. Alvarez. And then we're going to hear from each charter. The process today is to have a brief presentation from each of the charter school charter applicants. Each applicant will have a four-minute presentation, followed by a Q and A from the board. I think conclusion of this session, we'll adjourn this session and then reopen for the public board meeting. And the formal vote on the charter applications will be at the next board meeting, which is on June 12th. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Alvarez.
So, good evening, Board of Commissioners and Dr. Santelisis. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. So today's work session is your opportunity to hear from applicants who are applying to open new charter schools. We formally shared a little bit about each of the applications at our last at the last regularly scheduled board meeting on May 8th. This is an opportunity for the applicants to speak directly to the board and for the board to ask direct questions of the applicants. And then on June 12th is when the board will make its final determination around each of the applications. So I'm going to go ahead so that most of the time is actually spent hearing from applicants and not me, and call up the first school. Okay, great. The presentation is coming up. Perfect. So if I if we can have North World Apple Community Academy is applying to open the Ames Sandtown Freedom and Democracy Academy come on up so they can actually introduce their schools, more about their schools, and take questions.
Shall I start? Good afternoon. Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to share with you all. Thank you, Ms. Alvarez, Mr. Roberts. Our instructions were to share with you our vision and then to receive questions. And we'd like to pass these out quickly, if you'd each take one. What you have there is just two pages, and then there's a third page that we may or may not need. So I'll start. We'd just like to read from our executive summary. We think that's the best way maybe to proceed. "I am convinced that the story of the black-led struggle to expand American democracy is a grand opportunity for us to learn and teach what we have already known at levels far beyond words. When we search deeply enough into the struggles for truth, justice, and hope of any human community, moving with discipline, compassion, and vision, we emerge from that exploration with lessons that were meant for all of us. In other words, when approaching the movement from this perspective, what we realize is that the story of the African-American struggle for freedom, democracy, and transformation is a great continuing human classic, whose liberating lessons are available to all seekers and discoverers, but especially to those who understand that the battle is still in their own hands and hearts. So I look forward to the reemergence of our large-scale struggle for democracy, encouraged by teachers of wisdom and compassion, filled with participants of many colors, offering creative alternatives for the lives of us all." That's Dr. Vincent Harding, "Hope and History: Why We Must Share the Story of the Movement", 2009. And here from Dr. DeBois, "Of all the civil rights for which the world has struggled and fought for 5,000 years, the right to learn is undoubtedly the most fundamental. The freedom to learn has been brought by bitter sacrifice. And whatever we may think of the curtailment of other civil rights, we should fight to the last ditch to keep open the light to learn. The right to have examined in our schools not only what we believe, but what we do not believe. Not only what our leaders say, but what the leaders of other groups, nations, and the leaders of other centuries have said. We must insist upon this to give our children the fairness of a start, which will equip them with such an array of facts and such an attitude toward truth, that they can have a real chance to judge what the world is and what its greater minds have thought it might be." Again, Dr. DeBois, the freedom to learn and thereafter. "The words of Doctors Harding and DeBois succinctly summarize the nature of the Ames Sandtown Freedom and Democracy School, Public Charter School, being proposed in this application. They contextualize the mission and vision that the local residents and founding leaders have identified based on the Sandtown community's needs to be transformed from the economically disadvantaged, underemployed, under-resourced, and undereducated neighborhood that it is today into the thriving, well-resourced, socio-economically healthy, and well-educated community of infinite possibilities that envisions itself to be today and in the future. Despite efforts to the contrary, existing educational options in the neighborhood do not fully meet, provide, or protect our children's civil and human right to learn. And yet, there is hope in an alternative method of schooling that includes purposeful instruction and elements that are systemically missing from traditional city schools that will meet and ensure these rights. We propose manifesting our vision of a school that helps our country move to ever higher levels of humanity by providing a rigorous exemplary college-preparatory education that equips our students to participate effectively and constructively in the world as civic-minded servant leaders of today and tomorrow, preparing them for college and career so that they have the option to choose one or both. Our mission is to equip our students through superior academics and excellent intellectual skills with advanced character traits that ensure their ability to make a living and a life. Our work includes traditional rigorous subject matter, core knowledge sources, and NACA's unique transformative Freedom and Democracy curriculum. Our K-5 constructivist culturally relevant F&amp;D model aligns with all six of BCPSS's goals and priorities. By seeking to ensure all Ames Sandtown students achieve at the highest academic levels and demonstrate consistent growth every year as a result of the exemplary project-based learning instruction and authentic performance assessments they receive from outstanding teachers in a safe and nurturing environment, supported by the collaborative efforts of engaged parents, community members, and community service organizations, we are confident in our plan's proven success and our capacity to implement our vision with fidelity, based on the integral role played by invited collaborators, North World Apple Community Academy, who already manages two successful charters."
Dr. Gray?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So the time to summarize, the time to summarize your plan has expired.
That's it. We are the Freedom and Democracy Schools, and the children will learn a traditional curriculum, reading, writing, math, science, and all of that. Simultaneously, we will constantly teaching them lessons of Freedom and Democracy so that they can navigate in the world as it is and build the world that we all desire.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And I just want to, yeah, anyway, I'd like to open it up for questions from the board. Mr. Cannon?
Could you speak more about your academic expectations for a student, how we monitor student growth, you know, what we do with students who are behind where they need to be, catch them up? Can you just talk a little bit more about the academic growth?
Sure, academic growth. It's, the children have to move. What we've done thus far is we move the children as a group. You're going to have those superstars who are going to be moving anyway. And then you're going to have some children who learn differently, who are going to need extra support. And then you're going to have that middle group who need just the ongoing, consistent repetition. And that's how we're going to move the children. We're going to keep in front of them sources that the school system uses and in other sources.
Mr. Hassan?
Thank you so much, Dr. Reverend. Question about with this small size, opening size of 126 students, how you plan to be able to meet COMAR minimum standards for arts, health, physical education, those kind of buckets?
Well, we have that number there, and with your permission, we'd be glad to expand it. We wanted to come in at a number that we are confident in, but if there, you know, we would hope there would be no blockage or any prevention or any penalty if we look up and we have 226 or 252.
So the question bears the same merit. Let's say you get to 500. How are you going to meet those needs? For the COMAR required regulations for the arts experiences and physical and health education at every grade level?
Yes, ma'am.
To provide a teacher to do that on those small numbers, how do you plan to be able to do that?
Well, those numbers are not so small. If we're at 500, it's easy. It's more difficult the smaller the enrollment. At 500, we will have the full-time special education teacher, the full-time physical education teacher, the full-time arts teacher. We'll have those full-time BCPSS vetted and connected and credentialed persons in place to take care of those requirements.
Okay, so giving your enrollment capacity cap at 296.
Okay.
How does that happen, then? How do you pare back and make sure that still happens?
Right now, we're looking at facilities. Right now, we're also, tonight, actually, we have, we have one of, a first of more meetings with the city. We went to a meeting, we were invited to a meeting, I think, a week or two ago with the city. They're getting rid of surplus buildings, and we intend to secure one or more of those buildings. And in which case, we would submit an amendment because we would absolutely want to expand our numbers, and we'd have the space to do it.
So my second, second pocket of questions is around students.
Let me say something about that. Good evening. It's good to be here among friends. I want to say that if the enrollment increases to 500, we would have funds to provide the kind of education that we're looking for. If we're not looked over or done away with in, without the money, we couldn't do it. And that's what we're working to do now with our partners. We're getting strong, very strong support from the Baltimore-Washington Conference. And we have other partners who are helping us around to get money to put forth this. We have a grant from the federal government, first of all, and they will help us. And we will do lots of things to advertise. We have engaged a person who is very good with media and will help us with advertisements to get funds from everywhere.
So until you get beyond the 296 cap, you will not be able to meet those needs, is what you're saying?
We'll meet the needs. We'll meet the needs.
Yes. How? Well, we're going to do project-based learning, and we will raise scores because we have been used to raising scores. We have high scores. And we will do all kinds of things with children learning about themselves to build their self-esteem. As it was said in the beginning, that when children learn about their culture, they improve. You know the people, Ron Edmonds and all of these listed in here that I didn't want to repeat again, but there are people who have known for years that when children learn about themselves, they do better.
Ma'am, can you, can you clarify the question? Because I don't want to be missing whatever is inside of the question.
Correct. So COMAR regulates that every student has an arts experience?
Yes.
Every year at every grade level?
Yes.
And COMAR also regulates that every student has a health and physical education experience every year.
Yes.
So that's three additional teachers.
Yes.
And I'm curious, with an opening enrollment of 126 students, how you can possibly afford that?
Well, again, as.
And what we do is, I'm Reverend Dr. DeBois, I'm part of his team, and what we do, pardon me for saying, what we do is this.
Could you introduce yourself for the record so we know who you are?
I'm Reverend Dr. DeBois, right? I've been at this board, different cases, when we did Afrocentric Curriculum, you name it. I was at Union Baptist Church for 45 years, at education and the military and the like. And I'm a community member, and I live in that community. The point I'm making is, this is the 50th anniversary of Brown versus the Board of Education, and the state of Maryland still has not desegregated based upon state injunctions. I went to Douglas Engine City, they were academies of excellence. So when you ask questions like, how do we intend to accomplish this, use the terms like efficacy, every student can learn. We talked about everything from addition, our lesson objective, we talked about sit teams, we talked about devolving, we talked about Roland Patterson decentralizing the school system, and you ran him out of town, you made good in New York, he died, and you didn't even celebrate it. The point I'm making is this, good people like yourself, who are charged by the state of Maryland and now the city to implement a federal guideline that says each child is entitled, whether at a charter school or non-charter school, to learn. Every child can learn, it takes the whole village to raise a child, it takes the whole child to raise together. I'm going to say that, I'm saying this, we asked the right meticulous questions. They threw me out of three schools in Baltimore City. They threw me out of Booker T., they threw me out of LaMell, and the like. And yet, I have three doctors. Because some white kid at the Board of Education on 25th Street, when they were trying to do these simple tests, asked me, he said, can I talk to him? And I didn't like him, because the only white people I saw was white people collecting, raffling checks or whatever, looking for a man on this beat. I've been around the world, and I'm rather bragging on myself, because a teacher I did not want, Sammy Coolidge Taylor, who was chopping, and I didn't like chopping, since I wanted Maria Broome's mother, right? Who was a radio reporter on TV. But what I'm saying is this, I'm saying if we are seriously committed, look around in the room, you see a community engaged, right? You see in that, Old Douglas, his church is right across the street from Old Douglas. Who did not go to Old Douglas? This is, this is old power. They became Calvin Education, he said, right? We got hand-me-down schools. We marched from Old Douglas to Whipoff, right? And at the end of the day, that school is still underfunded.
I think we have some.
I still would ask, I almost do this, I still would ask these grassroots in our office. When they wanted to de-close down Douglas and Patterson at the same, I almost do it at the same time. And we joined in unity with Patterson to save those schools, because we did a rally, and we said we were academies of excellence. All I'm saying is to you, if you really feel us and hear us, because we can argue statisticians and pedagogy all day long. In the end, do you believe in urban education? That's the question. Because if you do, the same questions that you're asking about this charter school, ask of every other school where you have no art teacher, ask for every other school that has no physical education teacher in Baltimore City, ask for every private school carved out of the public school system like City, like Powell, like Western.
Excuse me, we have, we have a lot of present, we have a lot of present.
Equality, is all I'm saying.
Yes, we are.
And not put this under a microscope, that you don't put other schools on. Because if you do, we will sue you, class action suit, and I've done that in one. So just listen to us, we promise.
We are listening to you, that's why we're, that's why we're asking these questions. So.
I'm sorry, Dr. DeKey is just.
No, it's okay. I want to make sure that we.
I just wanted you to know, to answer your question, we would, to how we would be able to afford to hire the educate the arts teachers, first of all, we have other monies that are promised to come in through our other resources, through our foundations that we work with at our own church. We also have art teachers, and we have musicians who are teachers, certified teachers, who are willing to come and do the work, even at 126 students. So the funding to raise those monies, to afford those teachers, is there. So that's to answer your question in the short term. They cannot do it perhaps off of, by the student-based budgeting formula. So that means that the church would also be one of those partners who would also fundraise to meet that need. Dr. DeKey is an avid member of our community, and he's very passionate about this school. He has been fighting for this for the last 20 years, before I even came on the scene. So we thank Dr. DeKey, and we appreciate his passion. Amen.
Just to amplify, you do see the document from the federal government? Again, we just want to reiterate, for those who may not know, the federal government awarded 14, it was either 14 or 17.
Seventeen.
Seventeen across the country. Only 17 organizations, charter organizations in this country received one of those grants. We're one of those. That's a five-year grant. So right now, right now, we already have, we have $300,000 right now. We've already started purchasing computers, books, other items for the students in Sandtown, because that's what the grant calls for.
So the grant is, that was one of my questions. Because typically, these, and this is just, I'm going to expose the limit of my knowledge in this.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought that typically, these grants were for the expansion of existing programming for the NACA 1, NACA 2. But is this, so this money is specifically able to be used for the Sandtown school?
Absolutely.
Yes.
If you, if you go to ed.gov, you will see our application. It's there. It's unlike anything we've seen so far yet with the city and the state, the document is there, the markup is there, what we did well, what we need to be strong on. And it's for replication and expansion. Expand NACA 1, expand NACA 2, replicate, build another in, open, convert, open in Sandtown. The language is there. They understand about Sandtown, so we're not talking theory. They're looking, our project officer is ready to come, he's going to give us a minute, but they're ready to come and see the work at NACA 1, NACA 2, and Sandtown. It's in the document.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
And the document goes from September 27, 2017, five years out. So we are in process right now, yes, ma'am.
Very helpful. Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Gray.
Do you have questions?
I don't think I heard how much the grant was for, the federal grant.
It's a little over 1.5, it's there in your document.
It is, okay.
Let's see.
Okay, good. Thanks.
It's a little over, it's a little over 300 a year, so it's 1.5 something. I've got, if you, I've got the whole 50-page document, if you want me to bring that back or email that over.
Well, actually, it says what's authorized is 603.
603 is for the first two years, although it's showing us the first year. We've been instructed.
Okay, got it.
Only spend 300 the first year.
Got it.
The next, so it's really weird the way they set it out.
Yeah, my bad.
But again, it's online, and we'd really love to come and walk, walk through the document with you.
Got it. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Thanks for taking the time. Appreciate it.
Madam Chairperson, can I acknowledge those members from the community?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask those from the Sandtown community who took off of work, or your children go to the school, if you all could please stand so they can see you.
Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm from Sandtown, I was born there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, CEO, Dr. Santelisis, Chairperson Cassiania, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Gray. Next, I'd like to invite, am I supposed to do this, Angela, or will you do it? BIA? I'd like to invite Baltimore International Academy West. You can lead them with, yeah, thank you very much. Welcome. So you take the time to summarize, and then we'll ask some questions.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Madam CEO, and distinguished commissioners and school leaders, for this opportunity to share our application with you. In the folders that will be coming around to you, I would take time to say what's in there, because it's important for our success. We have in there the executive summary, I know you have it, the completed online survey, the international baccalaureate, the blank survey for the community, international baccalaureate primary years program, the international baccalaureate brochure, and on the right side, you have the what parents want to know about language immersion, kindergarten educational target sheet. In our school, we send home expectations for our students and with, for the parents to know, be au courant of what's going on in the school. And we also have the kindergarten monthly lesson plan. We also have in there how we accommodate students with various learning needs. After many years of thoughtful consideration, we decided to replicate the city's, Baltimore City's UNI-Mortal Lingual Language Immersion and International Baccalaureate World School. In fact, city schools is the only district anywhere in the United States that can both of having total immersion programs in all of the five or six official United Nations languages, including English. Five foreign languages with English being the six official United Nations languages. This is a school that combines two unique educational models. These two models are innovative, but yet proven and grounded in research. Our reason for replicating BIA is simply to expand access to quality educational programming to more of city school children, Baltimore City children. Within the last decade, we have seen the lives of our children and their families change, literally change, as they are exposed to the world right here in Baltimore City. Replicating BIA will automatically increase city schools' primary years and middle years' international baccalaureate program, because as replicated, as a replication of a school that already exists that is an international baccalaureate school, this school will automatically become an international baccalaureate world school, UNI training teachers, and sparing us the expensive fees that you pay to become international baccalaureate schools and all of that it takes. The replicated school will start in 2019 with pre-K and kindergarten and sixth grade concurrently, and add a grade each year until both ends reach eighth grade. In fact, in 2007, we started the first BIA with kindergarten and first grade in Chinese immersion, and kindergarten in fifth grade in French immersion. Second to fifth grade are considered late immersion. Therefore, this organization, this school has experience in doing late immersion. We've also have had late immersion recently with sixth graders that came from city schools and other private schools that did quite well, went on to enter into the best city school, high schools and private schools, and they are, they were able to be proficient at a level that we gave them the seal of baccaluree. In short, we are saying that what we have already done in Baltimore City can be expanded so that more kids have this quality education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Hassan?
So how will you propose, or maybe how do you, from your lessons learned, dealing and working with students with disabilities in this curriculum and in this program?
So children with disability, you know, the, even currently, you have, have, learning through a foreign language does not exclude children with disability. The special education teachers work with the general education teachers. Their accommodations are delivered through the language immersion program by the general education teachers. Our purpose is to have, by law, we have to have them educated in the least restricted environment, and so we make sure that that is happening. And whenever there's a need for any pullout, it's being done by the special ed teacher, but majority of the time, they are in their immersion classroom, being, given their accommodations by language immersion teachers.
So even with your starting enrollment of 325, do you plan to have a full-time special education teacher on staff, or will you contract that out?
We have a full-time education, special education teacher. Okay.
Normally, with the special education, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. My name is Obadiah Swin, I'm the Financial Manager for Baltimore International Incorporated. Normally, with the special education teacher, it's dependent upon the special education and need of the school. And we, when we were going through the school, based on past history and based on the amount of students that have come through with special education, we are proposing initially, based on the numbers, that we have 0.5 special education teacher. Now, depending on how since city schools fund the special education program, whenever the funds are, we use other resources to get materials, and then we put all of the resources in the teacher. So that's how normally we do. If there is more students than need in the, a full-time special education teacher, we put funds towards that.
I have a question about, never mind. Commissioner Frank, I'll defer.
Hi, good evening. I'm looking at your budget revenues, the appendix five, and it shows student enrollment starting at 325 and growing to 1,075. But the building size stays the same at 60,000 square feet, and I don't, I don't know what, what is the best practice for gross square footage divided by students, but it's probably in the 100, 100-square-foot range. So I don't think that 1,000 students would be able to fit in a 60,000-square-foot building. Can you speak to that?
You are right. We are, we are looking, we've been looking at buildings that will meet this capacity of. that will meet this capacity of, that will be enough for the number of students we're icing for. So this can be, this can be corrected. We have been looking for buildings to have seventy-five thousand square feet and more. We've already looked at seven schools with four being city schools, surplus schools back to the city, and three being the academy schools. But we are, we are aware, because where we are right now is about seventy-five thousand square feet. So we will make sure that we have the capacity needed to accommodate the growth.
Right. And you're going to want to inflate your facility costs as well, which are pretty stable in this. So as you grow in building size, you're also going to need to grow in your cost to maintain the building.
Yeah, well, normally what, what we have done in the past, over the last couple of years, we, right now in the school, BIA is housed at the St. Anthony's School with the Ashes. And one of the things that we did is the, the school itself, the building itself is seventy-two, I mean, seventy thousand square foot. But we became innovative and asked into polables and all of that. Now, the reason why the cost is held constant is because we are looking at the possibilities since BIA Incorporated has already, some of the funds and the investment will come from the parent organization to be able to underwrite some of those different things. But we are, we're just looking at how, what specifically are we going to be able to draw out from those differences? So most of the funds funding because we have already done these things in the past.
My question is about the, the expansion into West Baltimore. If you could just talk a little bit about what kinds of conversations you've had in different communities in West Baltimore or with different potential partners? Just a little bit about the relationships that you've been building as part of this process.
So we have been talking to people from different organizations in West Baltimore, such as, there's a large church in West Baltimore. I don't know if you can name names here that have more than seventy thousand members and a lot of children that go there. We have petitions with them. They are fitting up right now. Because we have not identified a specific location in West Baltimore, we, with the building, we are just exploring the entire side, even to the west also, to West Baltimore, even down south. We've gone to different, we have met with different, at different church meetings. We've gone to different organizations to talk to them about. And we are actually going street to street like we did for the first BIA and fitting in petitions of people that are there. And the petition that you have, the sample is that, will you have a child at this age in two thousand nineteen? Will you be able to send your children? We're getting that kind of feedback. We are using the current school to also inform us about people that are on that side to be able to get to them to fit in the petition.
Thank you. Helpful. Okay. Commissioner Cannon?
Can you talk a little more about the operation side of it? Because it is a big operation. The schools are going to be in separate locations. Can you staff up? And why do you feel confident you could staff up? Meaning finding the teachers, the qualified teachers to deliver the instruction. I've visited your campus. It's very impressive. But, you know, how, how do you, can you just talk a little bit more of, like, particularly on the staffing side?
Yeah, that's a challenge to be able to find language immersion teachers. We have, over the years, done a lot with word of mouth from our current teachers and also have been able to tap into the different professional organizations that advertise. We look for teachers in every, wherever we can. We have visited, we have worked with the Baltimore City Public Schools, job fairs and their listings that they have. Our biggest success has been with word of mouth. People who know the people that are educators that are perfectly bilingual in the two languages. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to scale in that area by having fairs and even, we've even been to Puerto Rico because it's an American place and they are certified also. So we look everywhere, wherever there's an opportunity for qualify because we believe in having certified teachers. We just need time for them to be certified. So we have, we advertise, we get teachers from wherever we can find them.
Let me, let me just follow, follow up on one other thing. Is that one of the uniqueness of Baltimore International Academy is that most of our teachers or workers, they grow from within. So sometimes we have power educators who may come in and we encourage them to go through the whole training process, getting certified. And we promote because we move from one, one grade level to another. We start and we only enroll in the kindergarten level. So like, take for example, we just launched our newer Arabic program. And we've seen over the years, all of the power professionals who have come in that will work with the kindergarten, they have all been, got, gotten certified and getting into the school. So that was, that's one of the way that we groom our professionals and in order for them to get there.
Very helpful. So thank you very much. And we appreciate you, again, taking the time to apply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to invite CEC Baltimore Campus, Operator Commonwealth Education Connections.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Sanz Elisis and the community. Thank you for allowing us to present our vision and school program. The mission of Commonwealth Education is to provide each and every student that attends our school a first class and quality education that puts them on the road to academic success and achievement and citizenship. CEC plans to do this through a rigorous and challenging curriculum and school culture that evokes scholarship, creativity, and the highest level of academic standards. All CEC alum will exit our schools with a renewed sense of passion, purpose, and confidence in their own abilities. Our program will be a safe place for innovation, innovative instructional practices that guide students and staff from the course to close the achievement gap where it persists and present new growth opportunities. Our commitment to students and their families as they enter high school and college will be able to succeed academically due to their literacy, numeracy, and core knowledge in science, social studies, and other relevant subjects. Our vision is we seek to establish quality education options for students currently others serve in the East Baltimore community and their families. This new and unique education option will provide students with an academic environment that leads to swift core skill development and constructive enduring values. Our, our proposed school, again, is in East Baltimore, serving grades, starting the first year with sixth to eighth grades in the initial year and growing from sixth through twelfth by adding a grade each year. The neighborhoods that we've canvassed, had community meetings that have shown interest is the East Midway, South Clifton Park, Broadway East, Clifton, and the Darley Park area. Currently, there is no viable middle school optional program in the area for students or parents. The following schools are within a mile or greater and have extensive waiting lists. The Monarch Academy, which is one point one miles. The Green School of Baltimore, which is two miles away. Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School, which is one point five miles away. And the Henderson Hopkins School, which is one point two miles away. We have commitments from two hundred and seventeen parents that are interested and have filled out our preliminary applications for their students to attend our school. We believe that ninety-eight percent of our student population will come from below the poverty line. Ninety-two percent of our students will come from homes that have incomes less than twenty-five thousand per year.
I'm just going to speak briefly to our academic program. We're priding ourselves in using the Apex, Apex Learning Program. It's an online program. It's a rigorous program. However, it is tailored to meet the needs of students' individual needs. So we intend to support our accelerated learners as well as our students who are struggling academically. Also, students will learn foreign languages, French, Latin, German, Mandarin, Japanese, and Italian. We're also priding ourselves by having a global learning, having global learning opportunities to travel to host countries sponsored by ambassadors and embassies from the United Nations. Our curriculum framework will include all eight, eight subjects, language acquisition, language and literature, social studies, science, mathematics, arts, physical health, and design, education and design.
So we also, my name is Vrenelle. We also have partnerships with community members such as East Baltimore Community Corporation Drug Treatment Center, East Baltimore Youth and Family Services. And I will name a few more since we don't have that much time. Men United for a Better Baltimore, Students First, Baltimore City Council. And we appreciate your time. Thank you for that.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you. Questions? I, oh, Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, thank you. Welcome. I read the, particularly the mission, vision, philosophy. And this might not be a fair question because the answer could be, no, we don't have a particular reason for being or we don't distinguish ourself in any particular way or we're not, or suggesting any particular model for charter school. But can you talk about what distinguishes your program, your approach, your philosophy from other programs in Baltimore? And, or are you modeling yourself on schools in Baltimore around the country that you want to share with us?
So we've pulled, in full disclosure, I worked in New York City as an Assistant Deputy Mayor for International Government Affairs under Mayor Bloomberg. And my reasoning for looking to do an international affairs charter school but not so much an IB program is because international affairs has been shown to raise student test scores, levels, and disadvantaged students. Also, Latin was chosen because Latin helps students who have struggled, that are struggling in writing, literacy, and it's a good base for English as well. The reason why we chose East Baltimore and we looked at specific programs, we saw that Baltimore has an IB program and also the Baltimore International School. So we wanted to be different in the fact that we weren't trying to offer an IB program. We wanted to offer an international affairs curriculum that was rooted and designed in, with, with the intent in mind that we're coming into a different school district, looking at some of the historic issues that Baltimore City has had with new schools trying different innovations in the student population and seeing what worked best for our program and what we thought would work best for our students. So part of the curriculum also that we'll be using is the United Nations International Schools curriculum, which will have our base of international affairs. I hope I answered your question.
Commissioner Bundima?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Reading the document, could you explain to us a little bit more about your partnership with Churchill Schwartz and Harvard, Oxford, Princeton? And, and just talk to us about how they plan on supporting the program.
Churchill Schw, excuse me. Churchill Schwartz is an organization that I currently work for. It's a public relations and government, international government affairs PR firm that has offices in Paris, London, Luxembourg, New York City, LA, and Washington DC. Churchill Schwartz plans on playing a role in to, in to support us with any startup funds or funding that we need up to seven hundred and fifty thousand for the first year. Also, Hope UA, which is a education management organization, plans on helping us with startup funding or helping us find teachers along with Student First and other administrative things.
Thank you. I'd like to know a little bit about your team's experience starting a school. I mean, I know sometimes people come for charter applications and they have experience, sometimes they don't. But it sort of matters that there's some kind of collection of educational experience, finance experience, management experience on the founding team and that there's some thought into the team's sort of educate, you know, sort of educational leader. So I, that's a kind of a big deal to me.
Great. So two of our board members have opened and founded charter schools in Philadelphia and in New York City. As far as our management team, Raquel, who's going to be the Chief Academic Officer, has been a principal and an administrator in private and charter schools and public schools. As far as finance and operations go, our chief, chief financial officer, Ms. Adrian, currently is the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for merger and acquisitions for G.P. Morgan Chase and has a wealth of experience in managing funds and capital.
Okay, thank you.
And to note one thing, the councilman Stokes came out in support of our, in support of our proposal and he's here this evening to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more question?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We have one more question. Commissioner Richardson?
I just have one more question. Can you talk to me a little bit about your outreach to the neighborhood?
Sure. We've networked and outreach to the community. We actually have community partners. The Enoch Pratt Library, which is, so the East Baltimore, the building that we propose to locate the school in is the William C. March Building, which will be surplus back to the city. And as our letters of support say, the city council and different members of the Land Use Committee have given us the support to use that building once it's surplus, surplus back to the city. The, it's the Enoch Pratt Library that we've reached out to, which is directly on the corner from the school, to use that facility to have after-school programs, literacy programs within the community, not only for our school students but also for the parents as well. We've reached out and networked with a list of different churches and community groups. And we've had community meetings. We're going to continue to have community meetings once we know if we're approved or not to continue to build interest for our school. And it's actually, can I say this really quick? So the community partners that we have is the Enoch Pratt Library, Eastern Methodist Church, Church of the New Covenant, Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church, Kid Stuff, Child Care, and the Oliver Recreation Center, where we've held one of our outreach sessions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, we'd like to invite the Da Vinci Collaborative.
As are our supporters joining us there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Sanz Elisis and city school staff. My name is Helene Luce and I am the co-founder, along with Travis Hension, of the Da Vinci Collaborative. In spite of today's emphasis on standardized testing, we all know that students do not learn in a standardized way. The Da Vinci Collaborative will ensure that students learn more effectively by connecting high school subjects to each other and to the real world. We agree with the Kerwin Commission that high schools need to expand the opportunities for apprenticeships. And like Da Vinci himself, our students will understand how the arts and sciences are woven together. Students, families, and employers often do not see the connection between what students are learning in school and career pathways. All these stakeholders, however, desire that students learn workplace behaviors and practical skills that lead to meaningful employment. Da Vinci engages students in developing skills through projects where the college-ready content that they're learning is applied to authentic situations. This method enables students to visualize how different subjects apply to their own real-world existence as well as career paths. Moreover, engagement in the creative arts strongly correlates with success later in life through improved brain activity while fostering enthusiasm for learning. Da Vinci will utilize DaVinci will utilize Summit Learning and Big Picture Learning to support this model. The Summit personalized learning platform provides common core-aligned curriculum used successfully in schools for each student, excuse me, used successfully in schools throughout the nation, but also allows teachers to differentiate learning for each student. Summit assesses content mastery, helps plan college and career goals, and monitors collaborative projects that build cognitive skills. Big Picture Learning, a nationwide network of schools, provides us with specific guidance and professional development in areas of school culture and leading students to learn through their interests. Our model addresses several priorities listed by you, the school board. First, our curriculum will provide rigor while engaging students in activities that are tailored to their interests. DaVinci students work individually and collaboratively to attain mastery in core subjects. Second, the DaVinci Collaborative engages families in making decisions about the school and encourages community members to participate actively by mentoring youth. Finally, the DaVinci Collaborative fills a need for a different type of high school in a geographic location southeast Baltimore that has few high schools but many school-aged children. In conclusion, the DaVinci Collaborative is rigorous yet supportive, personalized but filled with collaboration. We combine the best qualities of existing public and non-public schools with unique aspects such as running year-round, internships, and interdisciplinary learning. I'd now like to introduce Blanca Tapawasa, one of our founding parents, who will present her perspective on the need for the school.
Thank you so much. As a parent who is soon going to be enrolling high school students, I am thrilled to be part of the DaVinci team. This is a team that is, the expertise is exceptional, the vision is one that will bring a student to be able to be a, first, treated as a future contributing adult. And it will include an individualized classroom learning that also infuses the mentorship. The DaVinci team has spent many hours and days reaching the southeast community, and through one of the community meetings, I met them. Over 500 signatures have been collected, 20 founding parents now is a result of that outreach in the community. What DaVinci offers is for every student to be, enable every student to be the potential best of them, and also he or she will reach the potential that surpasses their own, their own expectations. So we want to see DaVinci to be the hub of excellence and education.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? We'll start, we'll go around. Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Given your proposed opening enrollment of 125 students, how is it that you plan on being able to economically afford both your arts integration as well as meeting the Koma basic requirements?
We're including an arts teacher in our core group of teachers. We've budgeted for seven teachers. And we were told that special ed and ELL would be provided by the district through that particular, the funding that is provided, depending on the level of, of students that we have. And as far as, I know you had the question about phys ed, we're going to have to rely that first year on some part-time staff, which is also in our budget. And then we'll beef up to a full-time staff in year two or three.
And health education falls in that same category?
Yes, absolutely.
No, that's fine. We'll stay on this side. Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. Please explain to me your theory or philosophy around arts integration and how do you anticipate moving that plan forward at your school?
We are going to ask students to take four trimesters of arts throughout their school year, and one of the functions of the art teacher will be to work with the core teachers and infuse arts into each subject. We're also going to have two blocks each week of an interdisciplinary block that we're calling the DaVinci Studio, where specifically each subject, or several subjects are combined to create real-life, authentic projects. So that we believe that everything includes art, everything includes science. In other words, we're not going to isolate each subject and not, the point is to show students how the real world works, that everything that you do doesn't just fall into a category of this is a math problem, or this is a biology problem. Does that answer your question?
So project-based, a project-based model?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cannon?
I have a series of questions. So did you, is this your second time applying?
Yes, it is.
What's different from this application from the last application? What did you?
I'm so glad you asked. One of the, we, we spent many, several meetings with Ms. Alvarez, going over what we, what we were told were the weaknesses in our application. And we specifically went back and addressed those. For example, they felt that our addressing of students with special needs was insufficient. One of our team members spent a great deal of time outlining the process of identifying, integrating, and providing specific supports for special needs. Do you want to talk to us?
Yeah. I'd be happy to add additional things. We officially affiliated with Big Picture Learning, which is a network of schools across the country. There's over 60 schools in that network. We were drawn to their model, you know, many years ago when we were coming up with the, you know, general philosophy of the model. But they really integrate a strong advisory program, which we are, you know, also implementing. They also do real-world learning, so through internships and apprenticeships, but that are rooted in student interest. So we've had several design sessions with, I guess, consultants from Big Picture Learning, and we signed a contract, and it's in our application. They also provide professional development that's ongoing, technology tools. In addition to Big Picture Learning, we have already started configuring and adapting the Summit learning curriculum and testing the platform. That'll be used to not only track student goals and monitor projects, but students will also engage in some self-directed learning modules, because we want them to be self-directed learners, to be prepared for college and career. So working with Summit, we've expanded our board and advisory board, and we've begun and have been successful in soliciting partners for internships. We also have several team members that have experience starting schools with strong internship programs. So we've broadened the community support. We've also started a youth board. So we have the community element, but we also have, you know, connected with nationally-recognized groups to strengthen our approach.
Okay. So there's a lot going on here. So it's, it's hard to, you know, I'm just trying to, if a little bit, how does it all come together? In particular, so I, I just am struggling a bit to see how it all comes together. In particular, can you talk more about the internships and apprenticeships? I don't like those promises that aren't actually fulfilled, that are connected to real-life opportunities and real paid opportunities for youth. And a lot of times, people talk about internships and apprenticeships, yet there's no really meat on the bone. So can you just, can you talk in particular how that all comes to fruition?
Sure. So the, now, all students will engage in one form of real-world learning in all four years of their experience at the DaVinci Collaborative. We recognize, and we know this, especially because many team members, including myself, have worked in schools like Crystal Ray Jesuit High School that has an internship for all students. So we recognize that it's a heavy lift to kind of secure those partnerships. This is another reason for partnering with Big Picture Learning. Real-world learning was what they call it, but it's really an internship program. And they have devised an entire program to help us get that off the ground, including a technology tool in which students can use to help, which students use to explore their interests. So through the advisory program in year one, all of our students begin to explore their interests and be exposed to different career and internship opportunities. They will engage in both service to the school and the surrounding communities. We will also explicitly teach workplace readiness skills so that they have a certain baseline level of readiness. At Crystal Ray, we found that some employers didn't want to offer an internship because they felt like the student ironically wasn't ready for the task that they needed at their placements. We want a baseline level there in the first year before we send them off to internships. That will give us not only the pre-opening year and year one to secure the foundation of intern, right now, we have 15 partnerships. We recognize that we need to ramp this up, but in the catch-22 situation we're in right before getting approved, it's like, you know, it's like upon approval, it's much easier to kind of approach a company or an organization to say, we are opening in 2019. Let's, let's do this. So moving on from that opening year where they're learning workplace skills, and they've started to explore their interests, starting in the second year of our program, students will be placed in internships. They'll range in length of time. We think that's necessary to be flexible. Not all organizations can host an intern year-round. Some might, some might not, but we also want students, to give them the chance to explore many options. And then we're also working with a group that's new to Baltimore called TransEd Apprenticeship Services, which is an outgrowth of some work done by the Children's Guild, which I know is connected to Monarch Academy. We're working with them because they want to expand down to provide a high school apprenticeship pathway. So we're imagining by the last two years, some students are doing internships, but some that, you know, they're, they're kind of on a more set path based on their interests and future goals, and they're doing apprenticeships. I hope that, that helps.
Commissioner Frank?
Could you talk about your facility and where you're planning to go, and also over time, how you'll, whether you'll stay in that facility to accommodate your growth?
Sure. We're in the process this week, actually, of submitting a letter of intent to the archdiocese for the building that was formerly known as Sacred Heart of Mary. More recently, it was housing the Americor Training Center. The federal government has completely renovated the building, so it is move-in ready with the exception of redoing the kitchen, state-of-the-art HVAC, Wi-Fi, et cetera, which was a really great find for us. And it is a 60,000-square-feet facility, which will, could hold us up through all four years if we don't find something else. We'd like to be a little closer to the heart of the area in the map that you have, as you see that's, but we would be in southeast, and we would be, you know, closer to a lot of neighborhoods there than other existing schools.
The, your pro forma shows rent, so you convert that to a mortgage, or how would?
No, we're not buying the building.
Oh, I thought, your letter of intent was to rent?
Was to rent, right.
And the terms match what you have in your?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Chinia?
You were mentioning that the building, your area that you're sort of looking at is in southeast. And so given another part of the population in that area, which is around English language learners, what specifically are you planning to do in terms of support for those students?
We have several team members who are either certified or dual-certified in English language learning. We have a very explicit protocol for those students as, as we did for special ed outlining in Section 9, I believe, of our application, all of the supports that we have. One of the reasons we adopted Summit is because they do provide adaptations for both special ed and ESOL learners. So that makes it, puts a little bit less burden on, you know, one or two teachers, so we can have all of our teachers assisting and doing modifications as we go along. But we are committed to doing outreach. In fact, our flyers that have gone out have been in Spanish and English. We're very committed to making sure that, and we will also, of course, adopt other languages as, as needed. But that seems, you know, that's the largest portion of the non-English-speaking community. So we are making a specific effort. We're putting a lot of things out that are dual-language to start with, to indicate that we're welcoming that part of the population.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, Green Street Academy.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Dr. Santelisis, Office of New Initiatives, Ms. Alvarez, Mr. Roberts. Thank you so much for having us and taking under consideration Green Street Academy's proposal to expand its current offerings down to pre-K through 5. I figure what's best to do here is introduce the folks next to me without which this wouldn't be possible, and also give a touch of context to the, to the request. To my left is Transformation Principal, Crystal Harden-Lindsey. She's the best at what she does, and I couldn't, you know, imagine doing this without her. And to my right is the co-founder and co-chair of our board, Larry Rivitz. Green Street Academy started as a transformation school and had about 200 students. This is nine years ago now, at the old West Baltimore Middle. And currently, we serve 815 students in grade 6 through 12. We also occupy a 140,000-square-foot LEED Platinum-certified building in the heart of the neighborhood that we serve, which makes this the second-largest K-12 LEED Platinum building in the world that's used for K-12. So we have some experience, obviously, growing, growing our programming, and certainly even growing divisions. We started, like I said, as a middle, and now we have a full high school with our first graduating class having graduated last year, and we're looking forward to our second graduating class coming up. On the backs of strong academic indicators, an SPM last year of 95, and a desirability that's pretty incredible, we've had over 1,000 applicants for our school annually for the last three years for fewer than 250 slots. We think now is the time to build down into K, into K-5. We think that at the heart of our K-5 experience needs to be mindfulness and illiteracy. Many of our students who come to us in 6th grade come ill-prepared for the challenges that they face at Green Street Academy and the rigor of the curriculum that we offer. And so to talk a little bit about the capacity that we believe the school has already within the school to make this move, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lindsay.
Good evening. We currently have an assistant principal that has worked in, at Lakeland Elementary School for the last few years before coming to Green Street Academy. Prior to being the principal here, I taught pre-K through 2nd grade for 10 years at William Packer Elementary School. Our school is really excited about the opportunity to extend to the elementary school level, already having several teachers that are elementary school certified. So we're really at a place where we really want to see the school grow.
First, let me thank you all and your predecessors for the privilege of letting us launch Green Street Academy from this table nine years ago. It was lonely up here. Let me tell you. But the mission, vision, and strategy we envisioned at that time continues to bear fruit today. Of the original core values, perseverance applies not only to student achievement, but also to the commitment we've made as a board, co-founders, staff, et cetera, to build a collaborative and durable culture, particularly important at this moment as we hope to expand and our reach. So perseverance speaks to our continuous drive for excellence, a founding tenet in the classroom and our staffing, with our newly Platinum state-of-the-art facility, our families and our community partners, and even on the varsity football field where our first-year season was 8-2, go Chargers. During the current school year, our board resolved to look deeply into our work and generate the first strategic plan since our founding. In the process, we engaged our board, faculty, students, and community members in a series of discussions, which ultimately yielded several long-term growth opportunities, the first priority of which is expansion to K, to K-12. We reasoned that including younger students earlier in the process would benefit the entire institution, and the outcomes for our students would more effectively fulfill our original mission, and I quote, "to create a pipeline of inspired, self-reflective, and well-qualified young people who are prepared to graduate, advance their studies, build careers, and sustain themselves, their families, and their communities." We, as a board and as a school community, are excited about this prospective expansion and hope you will enable us to fully realize our dream to create an anchor institution in West Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open for questions? Commissioner McFadden?
Could you be a little bit more detailed about your academic plan for the elementary school students that? school students that you're planning to expand the school for?
We would like to use DIBELS as one of the data points in our early, early education, early grades. We also want to look closely at the social-emotional side of educating the scholars. Right now, we're using IREDDI in the middle school. We plan to expand down and see what our scholars actually need. Right now, we have a model for our middle school grades where we have a special educator paired with our lower-performance scholars as a way to support them throughout the day. We plan to have a similar co-teaching model in our elementary school as, as we meet, work to meet the needs of our scholars.
I'll also add that, I'm sorry, on the mindfulness side, we're planning on using the mindfulness-based stress reduction program that comes out of Massachusetts that's seen some really good results.
Does that speak to the academic aspect, that, what you just referenced?
Oh, the mindful, well, so, to be honest with you, some of the issues academically...
It's holistic, right?
Exactly. It's, it's an ability to be able to focus, to be able to really reach your capacity and your potential as a student. And if you're distracted, if you are in a place in your head where you can't fully concentrate on what's being taught, then unfortunately, it obviously has a negative impact on what it is you're able to accomplish and show everybody you're able to accomplish academically. And so, unless we're able to support our students in being able to cope and center themselves and become the most effective students they can be from that place, we're going to be leaving some potential on the table academically, we believe.
Can you talk a little bit about, hi everyone, good to see everybody. How does the sustainability in the green piece, you know, infuse into the elementary school? I wasn't clear on that.
He stole my question.
Sorry.
It's a good question. So, one of the things that we were very purposeful about when we developed the building wasn't just the Wi-Fi and the structure, it was the furniture. And you'll see why I'm talking about this in a second. Furniture allows for dynamic, small-group work to happen immediately. Pacing is incredibly quick in our classrooms in a large part because you can be in test-taking mode, partner mode, small-group mode, and full-class discussion mode within 30 seconds. So, there's not much off-time. Our school, I believe, is as successful as it is because of its reliance on small-group and collaboration. And one of the things that you're able to do in small work and collaboration is do some investigative work, some hands-on learning. I mean, for instance, just last Friday, we were lucky enough to have an entire pollinator garden put in by the National Wildlife Federation along with Blue Water Baltimore and Biohabitats. And I mention this because our students took part in the planning of it, our students took part in the planting of it, and they will take part, obviously, in the maintenance and the data collection from it. And so, with an eight-and-a-half-acre classroom, which is what Green Street Academy sits on, we're able to leverage our opportunities outdoors as well as indoors with our furniture and our small-group work to make sure that students, even as young as elementary students, are interacting with nature, whether it's as simple as water testing outside and soil testing and air testing, or whether it's coming in and actually starting to do some more significant analysis of their data in science classrooms in the fifth grade.
My question has to do with, when you talk about expanding to go into the elementary grades, what conversations, outreach, discussions have you had with elementary school parents, families? That's a, that's a big, I mean, it's a big different, it's a big difference. I mean, they're thinking different things when they're thinking about where to send their, and you're starting at 30, I'll combine my question, so I want to understand the economics of 30, given that, you know what I mean? I mean, you're, you're bringing them into an existing school, so I think your economics are different than the other questions we're asking. But I do want to understand that a little bit better, because those parents are thinking completely different thoughts than, like, the sixth-grade parents. So, if you could just help me understand that a little bit in terms of your outreach.
So, I'll start with the outreach and end with the economics?
That'd be great.
So, and Crystal can speak to this firsthand because she's at the other end of the phone line, but anecdotally, we've been receiving requests for an elementary school basically since we've been open. Parents want a safe, stable, rigorous environment to send their kids, of course they do. And a lot of the things, particularly that we, and I use the word "promise," but we talk about in our mission, our vision, when we say that we're going to, you know, do certain things, have certain programs, they're there. I mean, this year, we're going to have 250 paid interns in the high school. We will have had the graduating class. We have varsity athletics. Parents see that and they realize that they want an opportunity for their students when they're younger as well. Sixth grade sometimes is, is late for our parents, and our parents who have sixth graders also have younger siblings who are looking for places as well. We literally put out a call to parents to say, you know, would you be in support of a Green Street Academy elementary school? And it was literally 24 hours before we had, I think, 60 or 65 signatures. And that is, I think, indicative of the type of desire that, not just, and those are just parents within our school, but parents around the community feel they want a place like a Green Street Academy to send, to send their students. And economically, I would say that, you touched on the fact that we already have an established school, so it's a, it's a little bit different. And we were lucky enough this past year to get through a bond refinancing with the support of the board and the system. And what that did was it completely stabilized our school financing, such that in order to meet covenants on the debt service for the building, we don't need the elementary school to spin off additional funding. We can operate the elementary school itself at break-even or even a little bit less and still be in a place where we are more than tripling and quadrupling our covenants, whether they're debt service, coverage, or liquidity. And so, we believe, one thing that we've learned as we built the middle and the high schools, it's school culture. You can't mess with it. You can't start down a slippery slope with school culture and then try to get it back. And so, what's really important for us is to make sure that as we build out, as we expand, in this case, down, that we do so in a responsible way, that makes sure that we can maintain and even strengthen our school culture as we continue to grow to what's going to eventually be over 1,000 students in a single site.
That's helpful. When we, when we, so thanks, I thought that was going to be the economics answer, I just wanted to kind of confirm it. When we are, come to this point, we're trying to take in all the information that we've, that we get so far, so, you know, what you've written, and we get some information about the, the interview process, and it, it sounds like you have reached out to your parents of the current existing students regarding siblings, but from what we understood, that wasn't something that you, you said you hadn't done outreach when you were in the interview. So, I'm just, could you sync that up for me?
So, we hadn't, so our outreach was within our own school. We didn't do, like, external outreach.
So, literally, the distinction between external and internal?
Yes.
Cool. Just, I was just curious.
No, no, that's, yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Canam has a question and then Commissioner Berkeley, Commissioner Richardson?
Why so small? Like, why 30, why wouldn't you do more elementary ones that would feed into the middle school and all that? Like, why are we, why is it so small?
We want to under-promise and over-deliver. I don't want to be in a position where I say we can take a certain number of students and it turns out that that number can't be reached responsibly or without using space inappropriately, or really cramming students into spaces where they won't fit. Our, the way that we've been able to lay out the building, and this is, I want to say part-planning, part-luck, our building's going to be elementary school first level, middle school second level, high school third level, and it works out perfectly that way. However, on the first level, those are where all our administrative offices are as well. And so, there are fewer classrooms. And as we retrofit the building in order to get ready for elementary school, obviously in the younger classrooms, we're going to need to do some things with restrooms and stuff that we don't have to do for middle schoolers currently. And so, that's going to sort of decrease the space. And so, I'd much rather come back and ask for more room than have to do something where we're not reaching an enrollment cap, where we're not sort of living up to the numbers that we stipulated that we could reach. And so, really, that's, that's where we believe sort of the responsible starting place to be, if that makes any sense, with room for growth, if, if the site will allow and if, obviously, there continues to be such strong demand.
Okay. Commissioner Bondimi?
Thank you. I'm, I'm one of the board members that's from higher ed and, and working with K through 12 as well, but, so, I, this kind of question I'm asking is because of putting together at, at Prince George Community College, we brought in ninth graders and early, early, you know, early decision, early getting degrees early. And we had buildings separate from the college students, and my mind started going back there. And my concern was, you bring, you want to bring in the, the elementary kids and then you have the middle school, because I saw your video, it was excellent when you presented here before, but how, you say you're going to have students on different levels. I'm greatly concerned with having, how you separate those younger students from the older students, and just having them on separate levels is a concern of mine. And you did say something about building out bathrooms and all those different things. When you start bringing that group all together from K through 12, that brings great concern because students are able to move around, even though we say they can't move around. And how do you plan on doing that, accomplishing that with those, all those groups? Usually, from K through 12, you are in different buildings, you know? I know Roland Park is, has one building and, and the other building. How do you plan on doing that, not just with locking the doors or blocking?
Well, so, I think it's, it's two-pronged. I think, first of all, Crystal and the entire school team has done an incredible job making a school of 815 seem small, but everybody knows everybody at Green Street. And that has to do with the stability of the staff and the administration, but also with the structures that the school has in place to make sure that student movement around the school is, is regulated and that everybody recognizes where students are supposed to be. So, to just be very, try to be brief, that is sort of a school culture side, but a structural side is that students have, they go to the classes in different colored hallways. So, every floor has two separate colored hallways. Students in those colored hallways receive colored passes, the color of their hallway, such that when they are walking the halls, you can see what class they came from. Every single color, so every single floor that's split into two, has its own boys' and girls' restroom, water fountain, and filling station. So, students don't need to move around the building for anything other than when they're called to the main office for something specific. So, there's a lot of accountability that the adults take on within the school building and that the physical structure itself helps to keep students separated. And I'll also say this, and I certainly understand that K-5 and 6/8 and 9/12, they're all totally different ballgames, but we have had experience and success doing something with the 6/12 that I know is difficult as well, which is separating the middle school from the high school and using the levels in these systems to do so. And so, the thought here is that on the difficult or the challenge end, I would say, students intermixing, that's absolutely a challenge, that's something we have to make sure we identify, something we continue to make sure that we're strong on, but the positive side of that is the role modeling and the mentorship and the possibilities that exist between elementary schoolers and high schoolers in supervised and structured ways that can absolutely not only accelerate the elementary student's experience, but also help the high schooler continue to develop socially and emotionally themselves. And so, with these challenges come these trade-offs where, because these things don't exist in this district and really not too many other places, single-site K-12s, even though there's research that says that this is actually a really helpful thing academically, that, that we recognize absolutely the challenge and that we have in place systems that we believe will continue to make sure that our students remain safe and that they remain appropriately separated.
Yes, I have just a question about literacy, and I haven't looked into this recently, but last I looked into it, about 75% to 85% of the population will probably learn to read almost no matter what happens, but for the remaining 15% to 25%, it makes all the difference in the world, so I have a question because this, you're getting into early literacy here.
Yes. So, one of the, one of the things that we're doing this year is looking at the American Reading Company. So, in the next two weeks, some of our middle school teachers will have professional development around research labs for our lower-end scholars to provide an additional intervention. And I think that one of the major keys is getting kids interested in reading. By the time they get to middle school, sometimes they've kind of checked out, like, I love reading or I don't love reading, so kind of refueling their desire to learn to read. We're trying something a little bit different by looking at the American Reading Company. We know that they have the Earl of the inventory for reading that we're going to start to implement for our lower scholars, and we're hoping that we could use this with our elementary school scholars, because it's something that I have experienced with before when I taught elementary school, and we saw great success using this measure, as well as continuing with the small-group instruction and the guided reading practices, as well as teaching our, our current teachers some work, doing some work around phonemic awareness and phonics is something that they've been asking for anyway, so it will fall right in line to what we need to learn to get fully prepared for the elementary school. It just, it's kind of fallen in place at the right time. You're welcome.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. I just wanted to know, are there any plans, if you have not done so already, to talk with the leaders at the Green School, because they are an elementary school already, and you had mentioned about the difficulty with working with sixth graders who are unprepared for, for the sixth grade? So, was that ever an option for you or a thought process as you are developing this, this plan?
Actually, I really appreciate the suggestion. We haven't reached out to the Green School, although certainly, we can and we should and we will, to see how it is they leverage environmental education in their, in their space.
Thanks. Thanks for your patience with all our questions. Before we call our last school, I want to apologize to the members of the general public. We have one more school to present, which means we're about a little over half an hour behind from the start of our public meeting. And I guess just for the future, I want to ask the staff, it's not, it's, people have been good about containing their presentations to the allotted four minutes, but this is the only chance that board members have to ask questions, so if we could think differently next time and give us more time for these meetings, just for, just for what it's, for what it's worth category, we need more time. So, if I could please have members of the Baltimore Latin School? that's a part of your application? Is this material that's in these binders, is this all different than what's in the application?
No.
Oh, yeah, we have access to all the application material.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we have access to everything.
But we did have one insert that is different and it has our assessment information on our...
Okay, so I'll, okay. Yeah, the book, I guess the book is a repeat of the application, which we have online, so if we could get the, yeah, if we could just get a copy of what's different? If somebody wants the whole thing, they can have, I read all my stuff online anyway, so, all right, let's do it.
.................................................................................................................................................................. For the purpose of driving today's discussion, we have some display boards with nuggets of core application pieces that may be used to drive our Q and A. While on the conversation floater, we're privileged to be joined by John Brenner from the University of Baltimore, one of our collaborative partners to discuss college readiness. John?
Hello, everyone. I'm John Brenner, Director of Early College Initiatives at the University of Baltimore. And the University of Baltimore is excited to join Baltimore Latin School in preparing our students for college. We have a shared belief that the best way to do so is to immerse students in college study while they're still in high school. I believe on our display boards, there is some information about college readiness, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. And now we have Arsenko Kirkland-Smith, who's a board expert on the code assessment tool, as well as school leadership management, having been a principal of a charter school and as well a public school. Arsenko?
Good afternoon. I'm Arsenko Smith with the Kirkland Group. The Kirkland Online Assessment Tool, it is an authentically created tool for assessment purposes. It bridges formative and summative assessments. It has the ability or the capability of bringing in your formative statewide assessment, and you partner it with the in-house assessments, and the beauty is that it puts those two together, and it actually creates a very predictive and a very valid assessment that teachers can use. And...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And now we also have Sarita Santana-Jonas, who is also serving in a dual capacity as Chair of our Foundation Board, who's independent and will manage our real estate investment and schools portfolio. Sarita has a background in real estate finance, and in addition, a passion for education, having served as the President of the Stanford New York School Board. Sarita?
Jeff was gonna be with her, with us tonight, so Jeff is the co-chairman. So he and I are both real estate and development experts, committed to managing our facility management plan and real estate portfolio. The concept of Baltimore Latin is about so much more than creating a school, it's about economic development and building a beautiful community. Our design-build proprietary program, the blocks that Baltimore Latin built, will drive that, while creating a world-class education in STEAM and language immersion. We have identified and negotiated a facility and are in the process of investigating other acquisitions.
Excellent. I'm sorry, we've got one minute left. And we've got Dr. Pearl Glasgow and Dr. Dunn Roberts. Pearl is talking about community engagement, and Dunn, a core component, the art of manhood in our program. Pearl, quickly? Microphone?
Dr. Taylor and Floridas comment on the design concept. Engaging, engaging the community is critical, and our founding families will be at the core of this. We have several letters of support from members of the Baltimore City Council, and we have been building bridges through civic association and athletic leagues.
Excellent. Pearl, Dunn, anything about the art of manhood in that portion of our curriculum?
We're, I'm really excited, and it's necessary for young men today. As a board, we firmly believe in the etiquette and proper professional exploration of development and secure space for boys to discuss their environment and manhood.
And we're out of time. We're gonna leave that be. We don't want to cut them off, but we're gonna be very respectful. Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
I'll give you that. Nice job.
We're gonna be very respectful of the time that we have. We wanted to script it out so that we could get the core elements all in one, and everyone could participate. So we're open for any questions that you may have, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
And just to be clear, this, this school we're talking to is for opening not next year, but the year after?
The application had a glitch, and there is something that is listed on the website, and that's something that it's the board's discretion, but it's the recommendation of staff that this is something that would open for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Questions? Commissioner Hassan?
So similar question to what I've asked before. Given an opening enrollment of 200 students and knowing how we fund schools, how are you prepared to get the additional funding that you would need to meet basic COMAR requirements, specifically around arts, health, and physical education?
Well, Sarita, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
That's where the, the real estate component comes in. Okay, we, being involved in school administration from a board perspective, but managing a budget of over $8 million, sitting on an IDA board where my focus has been on economic development, a lot of schools fall short when it comes to meeting unfunded mandates, you know, meeting, you know, just the budgetary constraints. And so what I felt in, in talking with Alicia, due to the leadership in her force side, she's like, look, we're gonna, we may have some issues, and right now, it's under, it's underfunded by $5 million. I think you guys cut the budget by $5 million. So, the charter school budget.
Not a, this, I got you.
Okay, all right. So our, our goal is to go ahead and acquire some real estate, where we could generate some revenue for the, as a foundation, as a partner with the school, to generate the shortfall that the school will experience.
And may I add just a little bit to dovetail onto that?
Sure.
In looking at the budget preliminarily, even with everything that we're talking about, we want it to be very particular, to be conservative. This is a very aggressive and ambitious program, and we understand that. Certain aspects of this, we have collaborative and community partners that will enable us in addition to setting up a foundation board that will do real estate acquisition and investment. We also want you to know that from the perspective of budgeting and the budget that we have provided, that we wanted to operate within the guidelines of what would be permitted or allowed. We've been in contact for art, for example, and we're looking at architecture as art, and that's a focus that we would want with art, and that's actually a part of STEAM. We've already had a conversation with the Maryland Institute and College of Art and are looking at the potential for a collaboration, given the fact that we have not gotten our proposal adopted just yet, it was too early in the process for us to get too far down the road. That's just one example. There's also talk in terms of athletics with Alexandria lacrosse, for example, and we have identified five sports that we would want to focus on. So when we look at physical education as a part of the curriculum and the teaching insofar as how we're hiring, we've got coaching staff that we're looking at bringing on board in the confines of what we already have. But just in case there's something that may not be properly anticipated, you always want to be prepared. In addition to that, 5% in the contingent reserves, again, there's a separate organization, and then even with our budget that we provided to you, we are looking for grant or outside funding. We are not anticipating in the first, however, two years of operation that we would have that, and as a result, that is not reflected in our budget, but there are a number of private foundations, and we've noted some of them in the application, and we'll definitely be looking and working aggressively to get that in addition to our real estate acquisitions portfolio. Does that fully answer your question? Thank you.
Commissioner Frank?
Thank you. I didn't fully understand the facilities plan, so I saw there's a building on St. Paul Street that you would lease, and then there was some interest in vacant, vacant buildings in Johnson Square, and I also heard you say that you would potentially buy real estate as a way of raising revenue for the school. So can you tie all that together and help us understand where would you be in the first or first or second year, and what, what, how do the two campuses relate to each other?
Oh, absolutely. Floridas, would you like? Okay, St. Paul Street, 1020 St. Paul Street is a building that was a former travel agency, and there are three levels to it, only two of them have previously been developed. We're very particular, one way that we're able to make our economic plan work was the fact that we could lease this space, and in leasing the space, we have a letter that's also included in our application where we leased this building space, $8,000 a month, essentially $96,000 a year. The numbers didn't come out of the air.
I'm sorry, you would lease the entire building?
The entire building.
So you would buy that as an investment?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
There is a group out of London that owns this building, has owned this building for a very long time. We've chatted with a number of realtors who specialize in real estate in Mount Vernon, and we've also chatted with the realtor representing the group. They have no interest in selling that building. What they do have an interest in, Commissioner, is in renovating the building for a long-term tenant, and they have agreed with us to a price for a five-year term that would be renewable, consistent with or coinciding with our renewals as, as they would come up with the school board. So that would be that building, five to 10 minutes away, we like this location, because with the University of Baltimore as a collaborative partner, interesting to be able to start taking courses for college credit in the ninth grade. Some courses can be contained on our campus, and we've negotiated these courses with the University of Baltimore, talking with Mr. Brenner, he was one of the first to sign on for our school. It's five to seven minutes walking distance from the building at St. Paul. Johnston Square is about 10 minutes away also, so with the flow of how things would go with our classes, when we look at Johnston Square and that space, we see a larger blueprint than just this. So our language classes, our language arts classes, we would primarily want to have those housed in the property on St. Paul Street, and that would be this building here. So we have the capacity to accommodate up to 128 students in this building with a 16 to 1 student teacher ratio. So while some students might start, so what we did include in our presentation or in our application was sample class schedules. So if you start the day with...
Can I, I'm sorry, thank you. I just trying to understand, you would operate both buildings?
Yes.
And that would allow you to essentially fully accommodate your enrollment?
Yes, sir.
Partly in Mount Vernon and partly in Johnston Square?
Yes, sir.
And so the, the economics of this is either renting space in the three-story building on, in Mount Vernon?
And purchasing space in Johnston Square.
And purchasing space in Johnston Square and raising money to renovate those buildings to, to house the rest of your program?
Yes, and what we would like to do, we've got the proprietary program, the blocks that Baltimore Latin built, a very core component to this is the design-build concept, and as part of our outreach, we did, Commissioner, have the opportunity to go and talk with students, boys, at Johnston Square Elementary School, and Mr. Raymond Braxton, the Principal of Johnston Square, is on our board, and also students at Empowerment Academy, who could be potential students for our new school. So if they're not coming to you, we went out to the community to have conversations. The question that I asked these boys was, what would you want if you had the ability to design a classroom space or a living space? What would this look like? And we've got renderings of buildings, one at 5837 Bel Air Road, and another, and then this is just par for the course of what we would do, the St. Paul Street building does not look like this currently, Commissioner.
Yeah, it's very nice.
So what happens is we got an architecture student who would essentially be using skills that we would want our students to have, and in less than 24 hours, I gave him some specifics, he turned around these beautiful pictures, and this is what we would have an interest in our students having the capacity to do, because it's transformative. And that's the architecture component that deals with STEM. So we would want our children to build out a space, so just imagine a blighted block, it's a blank canvas, and they're designing this over the course of their school careers. And that's, we've got a community engagement piece, where we would take in thoughts from the community led by our founding families and our board members to discuss this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we've also secured a letter of credit, and that's also included in our packet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you, thank you for all the material. By Commissioner Hassan, second. Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Unanimously in favor of adjourning the charter work session, 10 to 0, including our student commissioner. I'd now like to have a motion to open the public board meeting.